And Commissioner Reed will give us a pledge of allegiance and Commissioner Rena will give us a moment of silence or prayer. And we'll go to that point.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for this time we have together together as a city to discuss. The needs of the city and to be able to work together to come to the conclusions that are best for this city. We ask that we might be edified and inspired by one another and be able to make those choices that will best benefit the city. In this, we ask in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Alright, moving on to agenda item number three, action on the minutes. Alaka, do you have anything to share? From city council? Oh, I forgot. Oh, I was jumping ahead. Thank you. No, thank you. Um, what did I say? Did I say action on the minutes and then I turned it over to Alaka? I'm just, you know, buzzing through the agenda. Okay, thank you. We'll back up. We're still on agenda item number three, but I'm not going to turn it over to Alaka. I'm gonna turn it over to anyone that has any changes. Do you have any changes? I'm looking at you because I looked. I didn't see any.
I'm sorry to report, Robin. I have no changes.
Wow, that's great.
That's wonderful, Robin. Thank you.
Good. She does a great job. We challenge her sometimes. She does a great job. Okay. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes from our six twenty-six meeting are approved. Now we'll go to number four and I won't catch Alaka off guard now.
Now it's my turn.
Now it's your turn.
Um, so the only thing that went to city council was the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Um, which was, which you guys recommended approval back in June twelfth and council ended up approving it. And that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Gone are the days of a lot of list of things and I don't miss it, Amy. What about you? I was telling about their agenda, twenty-three agenda items sometimes and two pagers, so I'm not wanting to go back there, but.
And, and open, you know, the public meetings would last until like nine thirty?
Yeah, so anyway, just not to detract, but just to rock down memory lane. Um, okay, going down to, we're gonna, um, agenda item number five, um, a public hearing to consider an amendment to the cluster subdivision ordinance. If someone would like to give us a motion to enter public hearing.
I move that we enter into a public hearing to, um, um, consider an amendment to the cluster subdivision ordinance. Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second to enter public hearing. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are officially in public hearing. If anyone in the gallery here or online would like to, um, speak up on this matter, please state your name, your address.
Dustin just joined.
Dustin, join virtual. Is there anyone attending online besides our commission? Okay, with that. See any to stay in public hearing if someone would like to give us a motion?
I'll make a motion, re-exit public hearing. Second.
We have a motion and a second to exit, um, public hearing. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Perfect. Alright, and, um, looks like we're out of public hearing for the cluster subdivision ordinance, so. Looks like you cleaned it up really good, Alaka, for us. Um, what kind of discussion items?
I would like to, uh, thank Alaka for all the work she's done on this and, um, I can tell that she's listened to our comments as we've had work sessions and, uh, and, and meetings about this. Uh, I think she's done a really good job of, um, picking up the, the concerns that, that the planning commission had. Uh, there is one, um, concern that I still have. And, um, I, I don't know how the rest of the planning commission feels, but, um, I'd kinda like to see this, uh, section one five seven point seven. No, one five seven point five seven six on the cottage courtyards. I'd kinda like to see that removed.
I would agree with that. I just can't get down to seven hundred feet for.
Per the home?
Yes, it's.
And we don't have to include that. That was just because most, um, cottage courtyards do. But if you recall, most courtyard, um, cottage courtyards are way smaller and that's not what we're proposing.
They're way smaller than seven hundred square feet? I'm sorry.
No, 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 the, the lots are. So usually those lots are about two thousand square feet. Yeah, three thousand. They're small and that's not what we're proposing. We, I can just take that out or I would be happy to take out the whole, the whole section. That was mostly in there just to, um, just for the design aspect of it.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
I appreciate you bringing this kind of a concept to our attention. Um, I think there's a lot of things that, that we learned through this process. I'm just not sure that, that we're ready to go quite as far as the, the cottage courtyards, even though we know that some other cities have done this in a way that, uh, that they really like. I'm not sure we're ready to do that here.
So the process for this, though, is we're not, we're not tying this, in some way we are tying it to specific zones, but we're not essentially granting this to, it's not like zoning where we say, R two, you have X amount of lots per acre. They have to be, these are the parameters for setbacks and lot sizes and, you know, because we say that, then the developer comes in, wants to do up that lot, then we're kinda bound to that. In this case, we're not necessarily bound to let them do this project. It's per our, they have to come to us and we have to approve it.
Right.
But there's nothing binding us to say, well, because we have it in the ordinance, they can do it.
Uh, right, like this is not a specific zone. This is just going through what clustering would look like, what could be allowed. Now, it can just be as simple as, okay, this design could be allowed, but maybe just take out, they can just follow the same standards that we would for any other lot in that zone. So it can still be the, you know, whatever size or whatever zone it is and they can still follow those same setbacks. We can even take out E two and get rid of those reduced setbacks if you'd like. It can just follow whatever it is for that zone. It's mainly just the design and all it is, is having that little open space area in the middle. Surrounded by whatever amount depending on, you know, the size of the, of the, the lot. It's not added density or anything like that, but I'm open to hearing, you know, your concerns on that for sure.
I do have a question about D, because maybe it's just the way I'm reading this, but it says parking standards still apply, which to me that is, they already have two parking spaces. And then we're asking for two more, so four parking spaces for a seven hundred square foot?
Yeah, but like I said, we don't have to have that.
Okay, well, I.
It could just be, you know, follow the parking standards, whatever, maybe for a single family dwelling, which is typically two.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that's an awful lot of parking for such a little place.
But that doesn't necessarily mean in the, on the house itself. It just means in the development. So are we, is that saying like a parking ratio for the development?
Yeah, that's.
That's kinda the way I read it, instead of like, you're not gonna have four parking spaces on that actual.
Yeah, the extra two would be more for like visitor parking.
Yeah.
Cause typically these, um, cottage courtyards have, they don't necessarily have a garage, so they have like a separate area for them to park. Or if they do, it's maybe one, because they're really small and then the rest would be in a separate area. But, I mean, if we're not dictating the size of the house, which we don't have to, then, you know, we don't, we don't have to have anything saying that they need additional parking.
Yeah, it's just my understanding of the parking ordinance is because it's a detached home, it's gotta have two. And then it says a minimum of two additional, so that to me means four.
Right, yeah. But, yeah, that can be confusing and I can just take that out and just say, follow parking ordinance, or, yeah, our parking ordinance.
Yeah.
Or we can take the whole section out. That's still a discussion we, we can have.
I don't, I don't a hundred percent mind it in there. I, I, I can, I agree with you, Commissioner Memregal, like it's something that our city might not be ready for at the time, but because unless it binds us somehow to where someone comes in and they'll have, they'll have to develop it, we'll have to let them develop it that way. It just kinda gives an idea or an example of, you know, what they could do. Cause if we take it out, we don't really have any real examples of kinda what we're willing to allow, if that makes sense.
And then also keep in mind, there is an MDA tied to this.
Yeah.
So we do have some say in that, but again, not against taking it out at all.
If there were another example we could throw in there of what clustering would look like, then we could replace it. I don't know, I, I don't mind it in there just because it gives that example, but at the same time, I'm not married to having it in there. But one reason unfavorable to have it in there is because it gives an example of what clustering could, could look like.
Yeah, and that's a really good point. I think the, the part that I have, struggle with the most is that, um, C with those itty bitty homes. And I know we're, we're all, um, concerned about wanting to make sure we have homes that our children and grandchildren can afford. But that's really small.
Okay.
And, um, i- if we could take out C, I, I could feel a whole lot better about this.
Yeah, we can take out C and then D, we can just clarify, it's the same parking standards.
Yeah, that would be a lot more comfortable, at least for me, anyway.
Well, my only concern with taking out C is that then does that leave the door open to someone coming in and doing it below that amount of square footage?
I did not catch that last part.
I didn't understand that last part either.
Oh, can you repeat that, Dustin?
Yeah, can you hear me better?
Yes.
Okay, so my concern with taking C out is that you're, you've given a minimum size. With taking that out, can someone come in and say do five hundred square foot homes because there is no minimum listed?
I mean, yeah, that's always possible, but that's, I think that's possible with any subdivision.
They can request.
Yeah.
They can request. It would.
Yeah, and but with this, be, having an MDA, if that's already something they're proposing, we can say no.
Okay, I, I like the, I like the idea of having the cottage courtyards and, and the smaller homes. I agree, I think seven hundred is, is small. I Googled that. It's like a single bedroom apartment.
Yeah, there's.
Um, but, you know, that is kind of the trend of where things are going. So seven hundred is small, but if, if it's something we still have some control over, then I say we could eliminate the, the standards, the size standards.
Yeah, and I think for me, I mainly just like the design of it. I think it could fit, like look wise within their city. Um, and it doesn't have to be like a tiny home. Um, some of the examples I've seen probably, I mean, I don't have the exact number, but they look way bigger than seven hundred square feet. They look more like fifteen to two thousand. Um, it's more just a look of having that area being shared in the middle. And that's just a, an example or an option for clustering. It can look, you know, very differently, depending on what they bring in.
Is there a suggestion for different number of square feet other than seven hundred?
Um, it would have to be, if we're gonna do a minimum, it would have to be less than a thousand, because we cannot set the minimum more than a thousand square feet. And that's, uh, Utah State Code. That's what I checked with the embutment's office on. Um, like, hey, are we allowed to set a minimum and what would that look like? And the direction I was given is we can, as long as the minimum is less than a thousand square feet.
You know, I'm gonna say something that's contrary to what I just said before. There's a certain part where the market will, will dictate this. And maybe if, um, I, I'm just talking out loud, maybe if a developer thought they could sell a seven hundred square foot home, maybe they'd build them and make it pretty, but I, that's, that's the part I'm struggling with.
Like, I don't think this would be popular right now as in, in general in our city, but there's some property like east of nineteen hundred, maybe where we get overbuilt and saturated with apartments and that's what they were holding out for. Maybe something like this would be more entry level housing for people to start homeownership.
Yeah.
Who would have thought we'd be where we're at right now with all these, you know, ten years ago, but we don't know what things are gonna look like in five years, ten years, so. Maybe this will be a real popular concept and.
Yeah, and I think, I, I think this will, you wouldn't put something like this unless you brought in a little more options as far as, you know, shopping, dining, things like that. I think that's where this would, something like this would probably do better. Um, because the type of person that would move in there might want more access to something that's close like that. Uh, you know, they might not have a car, right? Cause parking's limited. They might need to rely on walking or taking a bus or something, I don't know, to get to where they need to go, so. I don't see something like this coming in anytime soon.
I was gonna say, to me, this seems premature. I, I'm not hearing a huge, you know, hue and cry from the general public in West Haven saying we want more density, more homes. In fact, I'm hearing the exact opposite from people.
Yeah, and I don't think this gives more density. It's just another tool to utilize land and I think, cause we already have, technically this ordinance already exists, right?
Yeah, this is.
And we're just modifying it to be another tool for someone to come in and maybe propose an idea that we like, but again, it's not really binding to us necessarily. Amy can correct me if I'm wrong, but the way that this is written, I don't think we have to let a developer come in and do any of this.
No, but it's, I mean, part of the problem with leaving it in there, even though we have an MDA, is that whether or not they're gonna make the argument of you have it listed as a possibility and you're saying, no, you can't do the cottage courtyards.
Yeah.
That is the deal me.
Is there a zone that it would only be, cause it would have to be zoned for, cause this is a higher density?
Oh, it's not higher density, though.
Oh, because the court, courtyard?
It's still the same dense, like the same density as whatever zone it's in. If it's zone R two, for example, and you have four acres, you, you only get the eight, no matter what. This is just whether or not the open space is in the middle or not.
It's proximity, not density.
Right.
I gotcha.
It's more the design.
Which wouldn't be visible from the public, so it might look more dense from the outside, from the street level, possibly. I don't know.
It could.
Appealing to people. People like to see their green space. They like.
Or it could look less dense if you put it right in the middle of the parcel, so, or of all the parcels, but.
Or it could be a mixture of having some of it be in the middle and then the rest be, you know, around it. I don't know. It depends on what comes in.
Now I need to go see one of these, uh, subpages.
A cottage courtyard?
Yeah, I'm trying to picture where.
It's kinda like my house. My house, my yard looks huge.
Is there someplace local?
Um, an existing one? Um, if there is, it would be somewhere in Ogden, but I don't have a specific example. I only have the examples on the PowerPoint that I showed you guys.
Yeah. Being a visual kinda guy.
Oh, that makes sense.
I am glad to see that we put B under five seventy B back into the ordinance about the intent. That's, that's good. I feel more comfortable with the word may, so thank you for that. I do have a question when, when there's space that's gonna be deeded to the ci, city. I think this is probably more an Amy question. But if it's, if we have a, a development that's part deeded to the city and then the other part is HOA, how do we separate that? I mean, it's a possibility. I, well, they're both in the same section under five seventy-three one, says it has to be a HOA.
Hold on, five seventy-three?
Yeah.
Where am I missing?
Have we skipped to the other?
No, I'm still in cluster. It's at the bottom of the second page, if that helps anybody, but there's no page number, so it may not.
Oh, the open space consideration. So it's five seventy-seven point?
Yes, we're, yes. One, number one above it says it's an HOA and then it talks about open space deeded to the city. And I'm wondering if there's ever a situation where you could have both. Part of it is an HOA and the other part is an open space. And how do you, you know, if an HOA is paying for something, I'm sure they don't want the general public to come and use it. So is there some legal way that we keep them separate?
Yeah, you just do it in the MDA. It just gets called out specifically. As to how it, how it's gonna be dealt with.
But how do you keep people from being people?
Well, that's just.
I mean, well, it's not necessarily loaded, but I mean, can we gate those things or?
There's just really not a way to deal with that. I mean, you said that you'd call it out in the MDA as to this part is dedicated to the city and but I don't see that being an, I just don't see that being an issue where part of it would be HOA and part of it would be city. It's because of the reasons that you're calling out, it's just too difficult versus it's like either all or, all one or all the other. It is, like I said, because of all the reasons that you've just called out is to, I mean, there's a pickleball court in a small little pocket park that we have, um, that is the city's. However, the HOA does kinda like what you're talking about, pay for some of the maintenance of some of this, of, of it. I can't remember exactly what it is, but it is a huge issue that the people in that neighborhood get really quite irritated because people, other people, outside people are using the pickleball court.
Yeah.
You know, that's not something that's really going to be happening anymore because of these issues. I don't, I just don't see that being, it's sort of like the MDAs, how they could possibly be written now is totally different than what we've seen in the past because of what we've, because of all of the things that we've learned, you know, like with Green Farms and with Staker Farm and, you know, we've actually, when Sherry was still here, she and I, um, went through and basically pulled out everything that we liked with the enforcement and stuff like that and made a form that we could use, that we could just start from, you know, versus letting them hand us a, an MDA form.
I just, I'm, I've lived a life where you prepare for the worst and hope for the best, so.
Sounds like an attorney. Wait, what?
Yeah.
But, I mean, the, the thing with the cottage, though, I think that there could be an argument over, it's in your, it's in your code. We wanna use it.
Yeah. Is.
And I think we'll have an argument over it.
Is that something?
If you don't wanna have it at all, then you need to say, we need to take it out. If you think there's a possibility, then leave it in, but.
Maybe that's something we could look at further down the line if we wanna look at it again at some future point. Just kinda where I'm coming from.
But I guess for me, my question is, other than the size of the house, what would be another reason why you wouldn't want to approve it? I mean, and it's hard to know, right? You don't know what's gonna be presented in front of you and what that concept plan's gonna look like.
Well, consider worst case scenario, like with, um, should we talk about the, um, West Haven Villas?
I remember that.
I'm sorry, but. Which ones are those? Remind me.
They're the patio homes.
We're gonna bring, it was the patio homes, the four, the floor.
The zero lot line, the zero, okay.
It used to be the senior villas is originally what it was.
But that's its own zone, though. That wasn't like a cluster or ARPU D. That was.
I think it was a cluster.
But, no, it was a zone.
Oh, no, a, a different kind of cluster.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, my, I, I, I've learned a lot. Every time we discuss these, I learn a lot and I really appreciate those who are schooling me. But the, my hesitations on this kind of stuff come from, um, my participation in listening to the public in our general plan conversations. And almost exclusively, the kind of comments I heard during the general plan conversations would indicate to me that our, our citizens who chose to be involved in that process are not in favor of this kind of a development. Maybe I'm reading too much into what I heard, but that's how I interpreted what I heard during that process. And so I, I, I feel an obligation to, uh, at least discuss those kinds of things here because I think we do have an obligation not only to uphold the law, but to, uh, to pass ordinances that respect the will of our citizenry.
What specific was said that, you know, that wouldn't like this? But this isn't adding density. This is just a design. This is not adding to it.
It's just clustering them and having more open space.
Yeah. And the clustering doesn't have to be right next to, you know, a already established subdivision or already established house. It could be the homes are here and the clustering happens over here. We don't know what that concept's gonna look like, right? It's, all it is, is, hey, these are just lots over here. You still get the same density. Now, I can understand the argument of like, well, they're smaller lots. Because that's what this ordinance is doing, right? It's making the lots smaller in order to cluster them.
Yeah, like I said, I've learned a lot in this process, but you asked why I've had objections.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And that's why I've had objections. I think, you know, w- we, we don't have citizens that have come here tonight to, uh, join in this public hearing. But i- if we, if the same citizens who chose to be involved in the, uh, the general plan conversation were here tonight, um, I mean, we talked about just casually mentioning some names of some people who have been involved in hearings in the past. Um, you know, prior to starting this meeting, I think those individuals would be here questioning why we were doing this and we would have to, uh, go through the same process that we've gone through over the last two months, um, in talking about these different ordinances.
Let's say hypothetically, we take it out and a developer comes in and kinda wants this kinda concept. Is he totally excluded from doing this concept or can?
No, he still could.
Cause you can do an MDA to kind of.
Yeah, they still could. Yeah, this is just if we wanted to have certain guidelines for this, but yeah, that concept can still come through. And you guys can still say yes or no. Regardless, this ordinance is still allowing them to have the smaller lots. But not adding density.
Okay, cause there would be a minimum lot size. If they came in and wanted to cluster and have open space, they would still have, so this just takes out the minimum lot size.
Um, it reduces it by forty percent.
Yeah, the only place that I think this would be applicable is east of nineteen hundred, if say somebody was planning more of a higher, like I say, I know it's not density, but I think it'd be more palatable for people.
And see, I don't see that because a lot of that would be more townhomes and apartments.
Right.
And that's not what this would be.
Or could it be? Well, I guess without square footage, it would be a townhome.
Well, it, it wouldn't just because the zones that we're allowing them in, A one, A two, um, R two or two point five, they don't allow townhomes or apartments. These are just for single family, detached, single family dwellings.
I'm on the fence. I can kinda see.
We can absolutely just take it out and just leave it out and just leave it how we have the rest.
You know, and I, I can see us, um, in the future as the, as the city does develop more. Um, you know, we may come back to this and think it's a really great idea in a few years. I just am a little bit hesitant today.
I think we're just too soon.
Okay.
But to that, to that same argument, though, is that when is the right time? Because, you know, we all have certain time length that we're gonna be on this planning commission. You know, we all have certain time length that we're going to be on this planning commission and. We can only serve so many terms. If we don't put something like this in. The people that are behind us, what are they gonna do? You know, I feel like we're kind of setting. A standard and, and I think it's something that, I think. The, the appearance, the visual appearance is what is stammering to, to Commissioner. Galt maybe is to see those smaller homes closer together, but in reality, it's not changing the amount of households that are. On a given acre at any time. That has to be done through the general map and through zoning. And the general plan, and I think we've done a good job of, of allocating those spaces. Um, I'm, I'm kind of. On the side of keeping it in there because I think it's something that is an opportunity to get a different look in the city. Without changing the density.
You know, if when it comes time, if you uh make a motion, I won't oppose the motion. But I um, I felt it was important to make sure that we thoroughly discussed this.
I hundred percent agree with you and I'm glad we're having the discussion.
What if we? What if we put, you know, some language in there that said, this is.
An option.
Example of what a clustering or what clustering would look like.
Sure, we can.
How does that look for us legally, Amy? That's always my concern.
Say that again, Andrew.
This is an example of what clustering may look like.
So we're not tied to approving it.
But we're, I mean, it still leads into the same sort of thing that I could see the argument be made that if um. Somebody comes in with an MDA and we don't want the cottage, you know, courtyards. That, then making the argument of, well, you listed as, this is what it, it may look like. I'm not saying it's successful. I'm just saying based upon some other issues we've seen. I don't know if it's going to give us problems or not to even have it. You know, listed as an example. So it really depends. I mean, if you guys are okay with, with it, you know, with the cottage courtyards, then leave it in. It's just, if you're not okay with it um at all, then you need to, the best thing would be to take it out. It, it's just. I said, yeah, i- it's like what I was talking about kind of with the villas. Yeah, that has, has its own zone, but because we didn't delineate some things like with that fourplex. You know, whether a fourplex would be okay or not okay, we then got into whether or not we would have to allow it. And frankly, I think we probably would have lost that appeal. Um, if they had continued on. The reason why we ended, they, they drew it back and we ended up kind of basically winning is because they couldn't um. All of the different setbacks and all of the different requirements for having a patio home. They couldn't meet the rest of it with that design, that fourplex design, so we got lucky that way. Um, because it was just this weird unintended consequence. And so that's the only reservation I have about this. If you're. Okay with cottage courtyards, then, you know, leave it in. If you're not okay with it. Well, it could, but. The thing is that somebody bringing an MDA and asking for it versus it sitting in our code. Saying, you know, this is an option, it's a lot harder legally to argue. Us saying no to it. If we don't like, you know, if we don't like the design, it's a lot harder to say no. It's just, it's a policy.
It's kind of like.
Issue.
But it's kind of like you said, worst case scenario, what does this bring us, you know? Where does it, where does it put us?
Well, but that's the thing. That's why I'm saying you guys need to make the decision as to, I mean, if you're okay with, with it, with cottage. Courtyards, then leave it in. If you're not okay with it and you think, well, I gotta see what the. You know, the design looks like, that sort of thing, then I would say, take it out. And if somebody wants to propose it, they can propose it under the MDA. And then it's a lot easier for you to consider the design, you know, that, we're okay with these kind of setbacks, we're okay with that, but. It, it just. Makes, if you leave it in there, a developer is going to say, it's in there, it is allowable, I should be allowed to have it. And that's where the argument is going to end up being. Because then if you don't like the design, much like with the, the patio homes, that fourplex patio home thing. We're stuck unless they. Unless they don't meet the, all the other requirements that we had stuck in there.
Well.
With that.
That being said.
That being said. I'm kind of, I can, I can kind of see both, so I don't, I'm not feeling strongly either way. So if somebody's feeling strongly here, how are, do we want to kind of go do a poll and see kind of where we're at or? Is it somebody feeling strongly one way or the other?
Well, I'm a no.
I'm not, I, to be honest, I'm not feeling strongly one way or the other.
And, and I'm not, and if Amy thinks that it's best that we take it out and then we just do it on a case by case basis, let's just do that.
Okay, that, that's not what I said. I said, this is a policy decision that.
Yes, I, I guess I should have explained a little bit more. What I meant is that if we take it out and if someone wants to do it, then we can decide on that. Scenario that that's what we need to do, right? That's what I was getting at, Amy. Sorry, I wasn't trying to throw you under the bus or put words in your mouth.
But that also sets a precedent, right?
If we take it out, we get a little more leeway uh to decide.
What was that?
If we take it out, we get a little more leeway to decide whether or not.
I think you.
It frees us up a little bit more to, to decide whether or not we want it.
You feel that way? I, I'm, I'm good with that. I know Jeff is good with that. We feel like we've discussed this enough. Anybody feeling ready to do a motion?
Yeah, I uh would like to make a motion.
Sorry, let me go, sorry, let me back up. Is there anything else in this? We probably haven't looked at anything else. We just kind of looked at this particular part.
No, I mean, that's.
I should have gone ahead and see if there's anything else. It's a, it's a bigger document than just cottages. I'm sorry. So maybe just that part of it. Is there any other part of the document before we, that part we. Discussed in great detail. Just wanted to give anybody else an opportunity if there's anything else further through. All right, well, if no one else has any other comments and is good with the rest of it, then I think we can proceed.
Okay, I motion to recommend approval of the Cluster Subdivision Special Provisions Ordinance. Uh, with the following change, that we remove section one five seven, five seven six. Regarding Cottage Courtyard.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second with those changes. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, with that, motion carries. So ordinance is approved. Then we will move on to agenda item number seven, public hearing to consider an amendment to the Planned Residential Unit Development Ordinance, PRUD.
I'd like to move that we uh enter a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Planned Residential Unit Development, PRUD ordinance.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second enter public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay, we are currently in public hearing. If anyone would like to speak up, if we have anyone in the gallery or online, no Robin? Okay, I guess these aren't real popular items. Um, they aren't until they are, right? But this is where people have a chance to, to voice their opinion, so we've.
If we build it, they will come.
All right, well, with that. Motion?
I move to um, what is it? Uh, exit public hearing. That was hard.
Okay, we have a motion and two seconds to exit public hearing. All in favor? All right, any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that was an aye. So we will exit public hearing. Um, let's have a discussion now on our PRUD ordinance. We'll move along to that one.
Just want to point out, I am aware that there are parts that have the residential stricken out. I will fix that.
Oh, okay. I was gonna, well. I thought I'd kind of work with you on some of those maybe later on.
Okay, and end with that, right?
Pardon?
End with that um correction.
So you're taking residential out?
Yeah, no, we're keeping residential in.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
You'll just have to adjust.
Yes.
Conference.
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, I've read through. I don't see any, I don't have any concerns or questions. She cleaned it up. You cleaned it up very well, Alaka.
Under four, three, two on the second page. Did we, are, is this supposed to be R one in there as well?
Um, yeah. Unless you guys are opposed to it, but yeah.
I, I just kind of thought it was an oversight, so I thought I'd ask.
Repeat that? Or was that geared at us?
I think that was an accident.
Okay.
I'm not hundred percent sure.
It didn't sound like the English language.
I again would like to uh make mention that Alec has done a really good job of uh educating us on this. And um making revisions to the, the ordinance based on the conversations. That we've had in uh, in these planning commission meetings and in work meetings. So thank you.
I second that.
Agree. You guided us well. You guided us well, so. And I think it's good for us to see the purpose behind the ordinances. So I think it's a good process to be a part of, so.
Yeah, no, and it's been good to hear just other viewpoints of it as well. Like, oh, here are my concerns and how we can work through it or what we can do.
And it'll be helpful moving forward when um residents or developers come in with um projects. We'll have this memory of going through these and telling them and we'll remember.
You'll have this one memorized, yeah.
We'll know where to find it.
Yeah, and then just, and I know we already voted on the other one too. Both of these, because they have MDAs, they will also go to city council.
Just Parks and Recreation have set guidelines yet, other than the seven acre.
No, I'm kind of leaving it open for them. That's kind of why I don't have anything specific.
It's hard for us to make decisions about it if.
Right, right.
Those are, but.
Yeah, I think.
Sure those will come.
Yeah, um, it's dependent on the concept. Um, I would like to. Either have Parks and Rec director say something like in her staff report or have him be here in person to speak on those if. If, when, you know, we get there. Kind of want to leave it to him.
So I do have to qu- question, is putting a tree in a park strip really a landscaping enhancement?
It could be, yeah.
Thought it was kind of a standard kind of thing these days, probably along with vinyl fencing. I, if we're gonna have a. Planed residential unit development, I.
You want that regardless.
I can't see that happening with chain link fence all the way around and, and those sorts of things these days.
Yeah.
Just from my perspective, but.
But you never know.
Well, they could come in with it. I'm not sure that.
Yeah, we didn't get approved.
Say yes, but.
And I guess with that, what, is there anything you want to add? Or subtract for how they can get that bonus density? And I think the last we discussed is we concluded and, or correct me if I'm wrong, that um. It's based off of the gross area site excluding sensitive lands. Now, the only way that we would go to like a net is if we go back and change every other zone. Um, to make it so that it's net, which we could do, that is an option. We can go back and do that. But that could be something I discuss with city council. I more so followed their guidelines for the sensitive lands. So I know that was one of their concerns was not including that when it comes to figuring out the density.
So in calculating the density, we would not count any of that.
Sensitive lands.
And all that stuff.
We wouldn't, no.
So it wouldn't be part of the gross area.
I do have a question on one area, just to make sure that I understand this better. In that section where we talked about enhanced landscaping.
Yeah.
It says at least forty percent of the open space shall be um zero scape. When I think of that, that sounds to me like we're gonna put um weed barrier and rocks. And so I'm wondering if you can help me understand that a little bit better.
Yeah, and I mean, it's dependent on what the design that comes in, but more or less, yeah. Now, we can change that to just have it be water wise landscaping to kind of make it more broad. And we can have different um options with that. Instead of just a zero scape.
Good, I'm glad to hear you say that because what I, I, I'm on this um. This um native plants kick and, and I did look up um and um. And thorn plants are not native plants either. They're also an invasive species, so I, I did look that up. Um, but if we could change that to say uh shall be zero scape or uh water wise. Native plants, I would, I'd like that.
Or we can say just water wise landscaping, which could, could include zero scapeing and native plants.
Yes.
Something like that, something around, yeah.
I told you, he was the best guy to go to that conference.
He was busy.
Yeah, I know. I should get busier.
Um, and then I would, I would just add for number four. Um, the other amenity approved by planning commission and city council.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
So underneath, so for number four.
Yeah.
Um, I would just add and city council to the end of it.
I don't know if we're, I'm jumping ahead too far or not, but uh under four thirty five F.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
I'm thinking it should read a minimum of twenty five feet. Because otherwise I think it reads like they all have to. Because otherwise, I think it reads like they all have to only be twenty-five feet as a setback.
For the garage, yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Sure, if they wanna have a longer driveway, absolutely.
Well, you know, on some of the larger properties, that's certainly possible, so.
Where's that again?
F, under four thirty-five.
Under the general requirements. So on the following page from, yeah, uh, keep going, right there.
Okay, yep, okay.
Yeah, so basically, just to walk you guys through the, I guess, approval process for this, um, for this and for clustering. Um, they, the applicant would first come in with the concept plan, um, that would go through you guys. Um, and that's where you would also recommend the density bonus. Um, and then it would go to city council. If that gets approved, then the next thing would be, um, getting the MDA. Put in place and, and the preliminary approval. Um, they would still have to do all that, that's required in a regular subdivision, the, that checklist, um. And it would have to be checked by engineering, fire, and myself. So all of that would still ha- you know, happen with these. Um, the only difference would be that it would also go to city council, and obviously that there's an MDA. And, um, final would also go through, through you guys and to city council, cause typically for, um, any other subdivision. It would just be with staff for the final.
I got more, I was just waiting for other people to see if they had anything.
No, you go right ahead.
Oh, okay, um, one five seven four four zero, section B.
Wait, give me a second.
About streets.
Four four.
Four four zero B.
What section?
B, as in boy, the one that's.
Stricken?
Lined out.
Yeah.
Why? Shouldn't we be looking at streets?
Yeah, um, I don't know why it's stricken out, actually.
That's a good question.
I, I think I know why it's stricken out, I asked a lot of questions about this, and, um.
Your fault.
Yeah, and our, our street ordinance doesn't really call for, um. Some streets to be public and some to be private.
Yeah, kinda leaves it to engineering to recommend, and then for planning commission to approve. For subdivision ordinance.
And so with that in mind, we wouldn't really be looking at that unless the, um. The, the engineer and, and planning, city planning recommended that, and then we would look at it because of their recommendation. I think otherwise, if we leave this in, then it, it suggests that, um, there would. It, it suggests an inclination for more streets to be private. Now, the rest of that clause might still be relevant, I don't know, but.
I don't know, I, I think it's our job to look at the entire deal. Not just parts of it, and I don't know that we would make any recommendations about. Public or private, I, I had an email from Ed and. He said he discussed it with you, Aleka, but it's not really an engineering thing, it's a planning thing to figure out that. Public and private streets, so I think we're part of that process.
You are, I mean, that's what it's, it's in our subdivision ordinance anyway, you guys have, get to approve it.
Right.
So we just recommend.
Right, so I, I think it should go back in there for that reason.
I mean, I don't really see an issue either way, I mean, I think earlier on, I'd say we still have to follow our subdivision ordinance anyway.
Right.
But I have no issue keeping it in. Unless someone else does.
And on that same page, down for procedures for processing. I don't know where you came up with that number for the ordinance, but. I looked it up, it's got something to do with sewer, stormwater or something, I.
Yeah, I don't know why, that's different, but yes, I will make sure the number makes sense, and same with the master development agreement.
But I could see where after all this work, you know.
There is a lot of changes.
It, this is a lot.
But.
We have really taken on a huge monster, I should say you.
So that will now be four thirty-eight, and then the MDA will be four thirty-nine.
Okay. But make sure it's one five seven, not one five five.
Yeah, I think the last one is, yeah, one five seven. Yes, we'll make sure it's correct. So to be clear, it'll be one five seven point four three eight for the procedures for processing of planned residential unit development. And then for the master development agreement requirements, it'd be one five seven point four three nine. Alright, so what else you got?
I'm sorry, what was the number for the MDA part?
One five seven point four three nine.
Thank you. That's all that this annoying guy has, so.
You're not annoying.
What's that?
You're not annoying.
Oh, you liar.
You are annoying, but you're useful.
Yeah. And be useful sometimes.
Thorough.
Yes, you're needed.
I will say, I have spent way too much time looking at this stuff, so.
No, somebody has to, you know?
But I really do appreciate it all, Aleka, fabulous, so thank you.
Yeah, I don't think this is the last time you guys will probably see it.
I'm.
But.
Almost guaranteed, this is not the last time we're gonna see it.
But you know, for now. And it also depends on what city council says, right? Can be sooner than you think.
Cause if they want any revisions, they have to send it back to us.
Yep.
If it's very substantial, right, or unless.
They can make changes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unless they wanna do the whole thing.
We'll be playing pickleball for a while, most likely.
Alright, anything else?
No, I think we appreciate all the work you've done on this and. For being, you know, doing a lot of work that we end up taking out of ordinances anyways, that you spend time writing, so.
Good, it's part of the job.
Alright, anything else? I think if there's no other comment or questions, we could move forward with the motion.
Okay, I'd like to motion to recommend approval of this, uh, Planned Residential Unit Development Ordinance with the following changes. Correct the language to read PRUD, Planned Residential Unit Development throughout the policy. Rather than referring to PUD. To correct paragraph numbering, uh, near the end of the, uh, ordinance as discussed. In section one five seven four three two, add the R1 zone. In section four thirty-four D1. Rather than only referring to zero scape, uh, refer to water-wise landscape, including native plants. Or zero scape. In section four thirty-four D4, add the language and the city council. In section four thirty-five F. Rather than having the setback be twenty-five feet, have it be a minimum of twenty-five feet. And then in section four forty B, leave that language in rather than strike it out. Oh, and also correct the, uh, the paragraph lettering or numbering. In section one five seven dash four three five.
I have a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, but those changes, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, any opposed? Hey, motion passes.
That was an excellent motion, you must be in a counter or something.
I was like, wow.
Really, sounded like Matt.
You missed Matt. Alright, with that being said, um, move on to agenda item number nine.
Move to adjourn? Oh.
Yes, and, uh. Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Motion adjourned, we, motion passes, we will adjourn. Thank you. Oh, sorry. I'm tired tonight, I am, I'm struggling, I'm struggling, okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, anybody opposed? Thank you. Thank you, thank you, and then once, and we will not meet on the twenty-fourth.